Everybody, please take your seats again. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Shivers.
Thank you. Just by way of clarification regarding the issue of the proposed elimination of various positions as set forth on the board agenda. Board Agenda Items F1 through 9 deal with the elimination of stated positions. Board Agenda Item F10 deals with a resolution approving the substantial decline in pupil enrollment alteration or curtailment of educational programming and suspension of professional employees. In previously reviewing this matter, the board had indicated a preference to be able to review each category of program or position elimination separately. So that's why there are nine separate board action items, F1 through 9. All of those position eliminations could be justified due to a substantial decrease in pupil enrollment based on both actual decrease in pupil enrollment and as well as continued projected decrease in pupil enrollment. And that enrollment, decrease in pupil enrollment is 324 pupils over a period of four years, if you're looking at the projected enrollment, and 217 pupils over past three years, prior to three years. So based on a commensurate reduction in staff, that would result in a reduction of staff between 17 to 24 positions. What's before the board to see me is a possible elimination of up to 20 positions. When there's a substantial decrease in pupil enrollment, the board has the discretion to decide which positions are eliminated. Now, in addition to the substantial decrease in pupil enrollment, there are secondary reasons for the elimination of some of these positions, and they are broken out in this resolution, which is Item F10. And those additional justifications, and again, so there's, for some of these, there's going to be two justifications, are the proposed curtailment of the elementary band program, the proposed alteration of the elementary mathematics program, the proposed alteration of the middle school program, the proposed curtailment of the high school traffic safety course, and the proposed alteration of the high school science program. Depending on which positions the board determines in its discussions to eliminate, some of those proposed alterations or curtailment of programs will be eliminated from the final But again, and the resolution's very, very clear, it's a legal document and it's meant, you know, legal reasons for how it's drafted, but it's very clear what the intent is and tries to be as clear as possible in what the justifications are for the program elimination and then subsequent suspension of professional employees. But I want to make clear that the substantial decrease in pupil enrollment justification, which is a justification for reduction in staff and related professional employee suspensions under the school code, that would apply to all of these potential position elimination and professional employee suspensions. Some of these, again, and we'll go through them, and the board intends on discussing and voting on these on an individual basis, have a secondary justification, which is either the stated alteration or curtailment of program. Do any of the board members have any questions based on that explanation?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing none, I think there's also a desire from the board to review these motions for these proposed cuts in program and basically for the benefit of the public as well as the board. To just sort of quickly summarize, Dr. Otto, if you could.
Absolutely.
What the different components are, how that's going to relate to the program going forward.
Just like to make a few comments, first of all, about some of the comments made earlier. I just want everyone to realize that the context of these cuts that we are facing and discussing were predicated early on in the budget process of the $5 million budget gap again this year. We've had a three-year history of similar gaps. I don't need to go into all the curtailments and all the things that happened over the last couple of years. However, I do want to say that as credit to our professional staff, while we have been going through a number of cuts over the last couple of years, we have been able to maintain our AYP status and meet all of our goals under NCLB. Having said that, there were some other comments made. I, as your superintendent, don't disagree with the moral obligation to try to provide program, but I also have a secondary obligation, and that is to find a way to pay for these programs. And it is my job with the other administrators in this district to offer the board solutions to getting the budget balanced. So I just think it's important, as we go through these, to have that as a contextual issue. Obviously, these, every one of these comes with some sort of pain to someone along the way, but you've heard many things back and forth about taxes, fund balance, program, et cetera. We get all that. But I just want you to understand that the context of these comes with balancing, providing programs with our ability to pay. So I just needed to make sure that was clear. So having said that, the first one on the list is the elimination of four elementary encore teaching positions, which actually goes along with the 11th motion. When we looked at potential reductions in program, and I also want to comment, a gentleman stood up at the microphone earlier and talked about Chapter 4 of the Pennsylvania Code, I want to assure, I want to assure anyone in this room that we are not violating any aspect of our Chapter 4 implementation of program. When you look at the language that was quoted, that planned instruction can include all of those different things, the fact of the matter is, in the state of Pennsylvania, there is no mandate to have an art teacher, a computer teacher, a music teacher. Those things can be done by the individual classroom teacher the way they were done many years ago. That's not what we want to see, but that is what the code says. So I just want to make that clear as well. So this curtailment, or this, this issue, item number one, is the four elementary encore teacher positions. What it's simply going to mean is, we have traditionally offered students 45 minutes a day of programming in computers, library, music, art, and physical education. This cut will reduce that to 30. We're not crazy about it, but to be honest with you, we were still able to maintain the full encore program even with the cuts that we're proposing.
Okay. Go ahead. Let's run through some of the rest of them.
Number two, the elimination of 3.5 elementary teachers. As you've all been following, our enrollment is on the decline. We're projected to have less than 3,700 students next year. As a matter of fact, I believe our projection is about 3,655. We can, we can maintain our class sizes by also eliminating a number of staff. So that is what that resolution deals with. The approval of one business education teacher reduction, this came from the high school as we reviewed the budget. It simply would reduce the amount of electives to be offered, but we're confident that there will be other electives for students to pick up as a result of that.
When are they?
No.
We're not doing shout-outs, please. Everyone had an opportunity to speak to the public. Sir?
When are they?
Let's cut them off.
There's a, I want to.
We're not going to address questions from the floor here, folks. Let's have some decorum. You had an opportunity to speak to this board at the beginning of the meeting. You'll have an opportunity to speak to this board at the end of the meeting. Sir, please sit down. Thank you.
The next one, the elimination of one school psychologist position. I have a little bit more to say about this than some of the others. This one comes with a little bit different explanation. I spent a number of years in my career supervising psychologists in special education programming before I came to this district. I think one of the reasons the board chose me to be the superintendent was they wanted to take a closer look at things going on in special ed. So I appreciate what Mrs. McCullough said about the, the school psychologists and the hard work that they do. However, and I'll be honest, the proposal for the elimination of a school psychologist does come with some risk. However, if you analyze the enrollment from 2008, 2009 to now, and our projected district enrollment for next year, it's down 300 students in that same timeframe, in that same timeframe. Additionally, there has been some talk that this reduction would open us up to more litigation. I can't totally dispute that, but three years ago, as board members know, we instituted an internal process that we call our child review team process. And not to say this as a negative, but the psychologists are not really part of that process. That process brings together the special education director, the special education learning coach, the district's special ed legal counsel, and me, I actually sit on that team. And we meet twice a month to engage in an intensive case-by-case review, building by building review of potential cases that may go to litigation. One of these monthly meetings also includes every building administrator. We sit in that meeting and we game plan every student that potentially may result in a lawsuit for us. Since this process has been instituted, we have dramatically decreased our litigation costs for special education. The psychologists do play a role in this decrease, but we have reduced our litigation, I believe, more as a result of that child review team process. As was so eloquently put, the, the role of the psychologist was mentioned. Testing takes up a major part of that, and I'll be honest, we do have the risk of running behind on timelines. However, considering that our projected enrollment for next year is set to be at a five-year low, I believe that we can maintain our testing timelines. I know some people will disagree with that. What we would offer is that we could monitor caseloads every 45 days next year, and if we feel that we can meet the timelines, we can bring forward a recommendation to reinstate that psychologist that would be furloughed on a, on an as-needed basis.
Okay, moving on to the, do you have more on that?
Mrs. McCowsky, I would, if you would like to, given that she directly supervises the special, or the psychologist, I just want her to add, and I think it's more information is better than less, so if you would want to just tag on to some of the things that I've mentioned.
Well, I think looking at the position, I wish I had a crystal ball, and I don't, and no one does. There's a lot of unknown variables that I don't have control over. You don't either. And I, you know, when you look at those numbers, and Dr. Otto talked about enrollment being down, yet we don't have control over the number of students who are coming through early intervention. We don't have a choice. We don't determine who those students are. So that number fluctuates year to year, steadily increasing though in the past. Also, we don't have control over the number of moving from year to year. I don't know how many students are going to move into the summer or throughout the year, and the student moves in and they're allowed to stay. That requires an initial evaluation. Again, a variable evaluation control. The same with parental requests. When a parent puts a request for assessment for special education in writing, we don't, we can't choose. We can't say, yes, we'll do that, no, we won't. If it's in writing, we are bound to do that assessment. Again, an unknown variable that you probably read in the paper, supposing of the psychiatric adolescent who's in a hospital. I don't know how that's going to affect the district if it will. Looking at our increased fear of litigation with child fund, I don't, I don't know how that's going to really influence the number of cases that are going to come up. So again, as Dr. Otto stated, to look at it and continuously review, if that's your choice to eliminate that position, that makes sense because if you look at the timeline instituted in the state of Pennsylvania prior to the reenact, the reauthorization of IDA, Pennsylvania had a 60 calendar, a 60-school-day evaluation timeline. That was changed to 60-calendars. That is very significant. But if you set in a review period, you have 45 days, or if that's the review period I go looking at, you would, you could look to eliminate possible litigation required from the following time frame. As far as the child review team that we put into place, that has been very effective because as we come together, at least bi-phonetically, to discuss potential cases, we are able to be proactive. But in addition to coming together twice a month, we have the access of our district's special education advisor attorney, who is able to, questions that are presented by teachers, by administrators, and I'm able to get an answer quickly within a 24-hour turnaround. This has encouraged the development of very sound IEPs. IEPs that are in question are brought to this team, they're reviewed by our attorney, suggestions given are then put into place. Again, proactive potential on cases. We've instituted progress monitoring, which is huge, so we know what students are not needing, so that's more able to change things. Documents are advised on by our attorney in area need situations. Coming together, discussing those avoids being blindsided by letters from parental attorneys indicating issues that are out there that could need to due process. RERs and NERs that are in question, our parent has requested an independent educational evaluation, we have the access to have those reviewed and to determine whether we are going to grant that request or take that issue beyond and possibly have a case to, to say no in some of those cases. Research really talks about how a well-trained staff is less likely to violate IDA. We have, through this, this meeting process, come up with topics that our staff needs to be trained on, confidentiality, IEP content, legally binding documents, and that's ongoing and we are providing that to staff. So that, that committee has been very effective, as Dr. Otto stated, the child review team, and has avoided possible litigation cases in the district.
Any questions for Ms. McCowsky?
Okay, let me move on.
Did you have a question?
I have a question. Ms. McCowsky, I just want to, for a little bit of clarification, in your professional opinion, tell me if I'm right or wrong, in your professional opinion, do you believe the district would need its legal obligation to waive the proposed curtailment?
I can't, I can't give an opinion on that because of the unknown variables. But I can tell you, based on the moment, I can tell you the number of students within my realm of special education, looking at, oh, it started in the 08, 09 school year, you were at 518, next year 540, 552, then it dropped to 528, and this year it's up to 561. Those are, that's the facts.
So I'm trying to get a, do you believe this proposed curtailment? Do you believe that will affect? I'm trying to figure out your opinion. Do you support this proposed curtailment?
I can't, I can't say the facts. I was giving it in front of you. Do I, do I know whether we're going to have increases?
Dr. Otto, do you believe, do you agree with this curtailment or not?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. Is either of them licensed psychologists?
I don't think they are. They're superintendent.
Okay, yes.
That's a legitimate question.
Basically, I believe what she's saying in a nutshell is, this is the first line of defense. Correct?
I'm sorry?
This is the first line of defense. Your psychologist, the eliminating possible litigation.
Actually, I would, could I chime in on that? Your first line of defense is your regular education classroom teacher.
Well, I think, I think they both go in.
Well, that's part of the training that we're trying to provide so that a problem doesn't even develop, that it has to even become a referral for testing. So we believe that, I can answer that very directly. We believe that the first line of defense against special education placement starts in the regular education classroom, point blank. The psychologist would be the second person to get them after someone would recognize a problem.
Any other questions for Ms. McCowsky? Do you have a question for Ms. McCowsky?
Oh, no, I don't.
Any other questions for Ms. McCowsky? All right, thank you.
Let me just make one comment if I can, and it's not specific to this issue, it's for all of these items. You know, we've talked about this for a while. I know how everyone's, I know what some of the issues are, but Dr. Otto, if you can once again let us know if there's anything on this list that you are recommending we do not do. As we go through this list, or now, or whenever you want to do it, if there's, I know they're all ugly, I know you don't want to do any of them, but if there's anything here that you adamantly say that we should not agree to, you need to let us know with this. But these are recommendations that came from the administration already, from the God, who wants it worked, so I'm assuming that.
Yeah, I would just note that the resolution, the proposed resolution, which is F10, indicates that the, all of these program, or position eliminations are pursuant to Dr. Otto's.
I can't hear you!
I would just say that the proposed resolution indicates an express certification by Dr. Otto that the curtailment and alteration of programs and the proposed elimination of professional employee positions is per his recommendation.
Dr. Otto, I have a question. If these were not banned with this proposed curtailment, there's nothing stopping the district from changing that. In the future, we can bring a person back, potentially.
That is correct.
Okay. Do we want to keep rolling through these and then we can talk about the merits? Okay. So, please continue about middle school teaching.
Okay, the four middle school teaching positions are a middle school team. This would result in an eighth grade team being eliminated, and then a seventh grade team would be split, and each staff member would wind up teaching two sections of seventh grade and three sections of eighth. That's not how we've traditionally operated. However, I think the important element is there that class sizes will increase from 21 students to approximately 26 students then per section. But all of the core content would still be maintained and delivered as, as usual. On the basic skills, that has obviously come with a long history here in Daniel Boone. Again, we have recommended this as an elimination. I think it's important for the board to realize that on the other side of this, we still have four reading specialists in the school district who will continue to be in the budget, who will continue to provide extra reading support for K5. However, I'm going to ask Mrs. Torscha to, we do have a reasonable alternative that we think you should hear, that can continue to provide the math support that we believe is important as well. So Mrs. Torscha, if you would, please.
Okay, I've been asked by the, by Dr. Otto, and by Dr. Otto too, is that some alternative is reasonable, aren't there, the skill program, and maybe would be detailed? Currently, we have 93 students in grades 3, 5 that are supported by the basic skills program, that's district-wide. We have 27 third graders, 31 fourth graders, and 35 fifth graders. Of those 93 students, 41 of those students that do receive basic skills instruction have IEPs, making 44% of these students, meaning that 44% of our students with IEPs are also in the, with the level of quality masters, just like their same age non-disabled peers. An alternative would be to utilize a special education teacher for each building and assign them to a role of a math interventionist. Because they are fully certified in both elementary and special education, they are highly qualified and would have the resources to provide the level of instruction that these students have been receiving prior to the 2013 school year. It would remain in an inclusionary model, as there would be disabled and non-disabled peers receiving this level of intervention. In some of our elementary buildings currently, we have learning support teachers that have been working in the capacity of a co-teacher with a classroom teacher instructing the lowest groups. We would be taking them from this wall and giving them their own room for math instruction. This teacher would bring with them all their resources to the class that they bring to their IEP with their students. They would be able to continue progress monitoring, deliver multi-dimensional presentations, do all the things that most teachers can do already by differentiating and learning instruction. In addition, we would be able to utilize Andrea Eckinger, our special education learning coach, to support the teachers with their curriculum schedule. Andrea is currently in the process of aligning secondary intervention-level math courses to the common core, and since this is a trickle-down progression, it will be beneficial for this model to be taking place at the elementary level, making it a seamless process. Our goal with this model is to eventually help to reduce the number of students that are referred to child study and regular education. Students will be receiving proactive accommodations before being referred and hopefully eliminating or reducing, really reducing the need for referrals, especially in the area of math. And we will continue to monitor the district's progress, and quite honestly, if we feel that we're not needing these student seeds, we will come back to the school board and we will ask for increased staff.
Would that staff come in the form of aides? Is it certified teachers?
They're highly qualified.
Highly qualified? Yeah, we would go with the professional staff.
And there are, in some cases, needs that would be able to assist in those processes to turn on the students who are participating, and they may, we have that need with them.
And how frequently were you going to monitor the progress of these students?
We would be using a progress monitoring tool. They would be routinely retested, tested on their, their basic skills, seeing how they are progressing along, making sure that they're meeting.
How often do we benchmark them, I think is what he's asking.
I believe that currently, right now, in, for five weeks, I was going to say four weeks, five, I'm sorry, five weeks, or twice a month.
Twice a month?
Mm-hmm.
Any other board have questions for Ms. Torscha?
One question. What's, what's going to be projected class sizes?
They would, they would stay roughly the same as what they are currently. Right now, our class sizes in Birdsville Elementary have 12 students in third grade. There's not 13 students in, in Alphacine, and 12 students in third grade at AIC. So they would stay roughly the same number. The same process would, would be in place for finding students who need the lowest math level of instruction. At the end of the year, there is a math test that's given, and students are broken up ingeniously by their ability and ability. And we would continue to do that.
Any other questions for Ms. Torscha? Thank you.
Number seven is the, we would again be reducing some of the electives at the high school. This was discussed at the high school and was brought forward. Just so you understand, when I looked at all of these, we didn't just throw things out there. We, I talked to all of the administrators and asked them, what are some things they could offer up? This is another offering from the high school. Would include the elimination of the traffic safety program, and we would simply be able to move on, and it actually is eliminating 2.5 positions.
Any questions on that? Okay, go ahead.
Number eight is consolidating 2.5 positions into one position. We believe that helps us administratively. There's really actually no impact to the program of this move.
If you restate, just so you're clear, you took two, space, half positions.
That's correct.
Okay.
Correct. The teacher.
Dr. Otto said you took 2.5 positions.
I'm sorry. Two half-time positions. Thank you, Mr. Sheen. So the teacher who moves to the full-time then is highly qualified to teach both high school biology and chemistry. And finally, number nine, the motion for the elimination of the two elementary band positions. The school would no longer provide elementary instrumental program. And again, I know that's obviously a very popular and painful, or popular program, a painful discussion, but again, I want to go back to the context of this conversation was that we're in, we're in a financial problem. So we try to put out programs that, even though it is a very popular program, one that we all enjoy and like very much, it is not required in the Pennsylvania Chapter 4 regulations to have an elementary band program. So that.
Ma'am, please.
So we basically, Governor Mifflin went through this a couple of years ago. About the only alternative we could offer for that is that we could make our building available for private instrumental lessons before and after school.
So you did talk to Governor Mifflin about their after-school program?
Yes, we have had conversations with them. It's, it's not hard to replicate that model. I don't know if it's ideal, but it would be a viable alternative.
When do their kids meet to do that? Is it generally after school?
Mrs. Torscha had some conversation. She can give you a little background on that. I had her call Governor Mifflin again today.
Those students need, for an hour, for 10 weeks after school. And they only curtail fourth grade, they simply offer a fifth and sixth grade at their own level.
Okay. How's, did they comment on how that's working out, or?
Though it's not ideal, or more to just replace the existing program, they feel that they're at least reaching, you know, about 100 students, that, you know, would not otherwise have any opportunity to have instrumental lessons in the fourth grade.
So they have 90 students in their after-school program?
They have, he quoted me, 70 to 90 students. I can't tell you if they currently have 90 or 90 is the highest number of students that they have had since they started.
Do you know, are they all there at the same time?
No, I don't believe they are there all at the same time. And I also know that in the government of the school district, they offer strings, instrumental lessons with strings, and that's not something that we have offered in the fourth and fifth grade. grade at all. And I don't know how many students are, I know they're grouped by whatever instrument they're using. And I know that our music teachers would probably speak better to this as they've been working with government and some other projects using those.
How do they provide, do they provide transportation or how the students get?
No, they do not provide transportation. Parents are picking up and I can't tell you that that's 100% perfect either according to the organization that I have.
Obviously, our environment is a little more widespread. You know, there's a lot of walk-through problems in that area.
Any other questions for Ms. Torscha on that issue? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Torscha. All right. So, we sort of reviewed all nine.
I thought they asked Mr. Semenaro's question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Your question?
You had a question.
No, I didn't.
Our comment.
About my recommendations?
Oh, I thought that was already answered.
I just want to say of all of them, the one that I have the least amount of predictability with is the part with the school psychologist because every one of these, I believe I can offer, even though it's not the greatest alternative, a viable alternative. If we get 10 move-ins next year, I can't predict if that's going to happen. We're basing that on statistics and data that we have now. So, that's why I opened my comments with, there is some risk in that one. But if those things don't happen, I believe we can do this. So, I just wanted to qualify that. The rest of them, again, they're all distasteful in some sort of way.
Thanks, Dr. Rado.
Okay. So, let's have some discussion amongst the board members on these individual options and what are thoughts on these things.
Before we begin the actual discussion about the items, I'd just like to ask a general question. None of these going to affect until the final budget is passed, correct? If we go into any of these tonight, none of them will have, will take effect immediately? It would not happen until the final budget is passed and funds could be restored later next?
Well, that's a question that we've already before. Once we voted on a, on one of these, we were kindergarten, as well, we're sponsored there. If our numbers are so correct, and once we voted on them, they're gone and we actually have to go through a whole process to bring them back, correct?
Well, right here, I mean, with respect to the action proposed for this evening, you would be voting to eliminate these positions. And the resolution would approve the elimination of the positions, the curtailment or alteration of programs related to the elimination of those positions. And would also direct the administration to conduct a seniority determination to identify the least senior professional employees who would be subject to suspension based upon the elimination of those positions. All that doesn't become effective until close of business June 30 of this year. If the board could vote to reinstate these positions between now and May, but you would have to make sure that that's consistent with whatever final budget is approved. Tonight is just a proposed final budget, which is subject to further review and revision by the board. So, that, you know, the options are still, you know, with respect to the budget, you're not adopting your final budget for another 30 days as required under the school code. With respect to these positions, you are voting to eliminate these positions. It's an act, a final action, but you could vote based on a change in circumstances or desire to reinstate those positions. You would just need to make sure that they were funded under your budget. Thank you.
I have two questions. One is, what is the total, what is the total amount we're going to save from the United resolutions? And my second question is, what's our fund balance going to be June 30?
Well, as we had at the last meeting, the projected fund balance right now as of the end of April was 4.4 million.
That's April. I'm asking for June.
I don't have a first of all, that's what our projections are as of the end of April through the end of June.
We're three quarters away through May. Is it a plus or upper down?
I haven't looked at May yet.
Okay.
About 1.975 million.
Okay. Two, roughly $2 million.
I'm sorry. You said, what's 1.97 million?
The nine.
Yes, it's $2 million.
$2 million. Okay.
Other questions, comments from board members on these?
How hard is to put them back, Mr. Subers? Do we just vote on it? If we can figure out some other way to.
Fund it.
How do we say, you know, figure out a way we can.
Yeah, I don't think that there's anything to prevent the board from reinstating these positions.
I have like a motion versus resolution.
Yeah, a motion to create and fill the positions. Reinstate and fill the positions.
Do we have to do these tonight?
There are some issues regarding notification of the professional employees. There's issues regarding the administration conducting the seniority determination.
But what happens if we turn around and reverse it then? I mean, if we, again, hypothetically, if we vote on this night and they notify staff and we turn around and do it.
We'd have to go back and do it over.
Well, I think you provided, you've met your obligation of notification. So, you're therefore not pigeonholed in not meeting that obligation further down the road.
Okay, but how mu, okay, why can't you wait a month? I'm just asking the question, why is the law?
For one, you need to have a proposed fund. But you should need to have a proposed fund.
Okay, that's something.
I mean, I think we need to, we need to get a preliminary budget out to the public. They've got 30 days to review that and provide us with feedback in that time period. And, you know, I don't see this process as being any different than years past where we've added things back in June. I mean, we've done it almost every year I've been on this board. We've also taken things off the table at the last minute, too, in June, where we've eliminated some things at the last meeting. So, I see this as still being fluid, at least over the next four to six weeks until we get to June 30th.
And the final action to suspend the, you know, the applicable professional employees would be subject to a vote at next month's meeting. This is, this again, is directing the elimination of the position and the conduct of a appropriate review of seniority and then a determination of the professional employees subject to suspension under the school code. Those specific suspensions would be brought back to the board next month in time for those persons to be notified and provided an opportunity for a board hearing.
I think that answers the caller's question. If you voted on these in the June voting meeting, then you're adding 30 days.
Well, the concern is, you know, the concern is that they're entitled to, we issue, once we've identified and identified those employees to be suspended, we provide them a written notification of their suspension, which includes a right to a hearing.
But my concern is, I don't have enough data tonight to decide whether I want to do this or not. Again, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to muddy the waters in this whole process, but I don't think there's enough, I don't think, I don't think I have enough data that I know exactly what I want to do on these nine resolutions. I'm not.
Well, I'm not sure how Mr. Subers can address that issue. So, I think, I mean, you're expressing a concern to the board.
A concern to the board, sure.
Yeah, clearly. And the only thing I could say to address that is if, if there's specific pieces of information you need to make an informed decision, you know, as a board, over the Nevex, 36 days or whatever it is, we need to work to make sure you have that information in hand to make an informed decision by the time we vote in June.
My concern as well, once it's out, we'll be hardest to vote back in. That's my biggest concern.
I mean.
I'm not saying it's not impossible. That's not my comment.
I mean, I've sat here, we've brought many things back in at the last minute.
Okay, but not to this extent.
Well, clearly not to this extent. That's the point taken, but I don't think it's an impossible task. I mean, we haven't even started to vote on these things yet, so.
I know.
But you have a valid concern. I appreciate that. I just had a couple of questions. So, as it pertains to the psychologist, how'd you guys determine 45 days versus 30 days in terms of a review of caseload? Did you get, I mean, I understand you wanted to interrupt the process before you got the 60-day limit, but would it be prudent to step in earlier in terms of a review period to see how you're doing vis a vis your caseload?
We could do, the 45 days coincides with the quarterly reports that we get on grades and student progress, so that seems to fit naturally with that. We could certainly, we could ramp that up if need be.
I guess I'm just sort of thinking to myself, if you're meeting bi-weekly anyways to review IEP cases, to make sure students are being identified, that they're getting the support that we need to provide, you're meeting every two weeks or every 30 days, you know, I think I'd feel more comfortable if, if that IEP caseload was being monitored a little bit more closely to make sure that you aren't getting behind because it would seem to me if, if the distribution of cases is lumpy, you don't know when somebody's coming in, then, you know, you don't want to wait until you only have two weeks left to try to address that issue.
I think it'd be moving forward if this is voted forward and asked that on the committee of the whole meeting on a monthly basis, that the special ed director at least presents where they are, concerns, issues. Are we behind? Are we ahead?
That's what I did.
Unprepared, unbiased report straight from her as to where we are so that we know without a doubt where we stand. Meaning, we've got 47 cases, which we need to do. Eight of them are going to expire in three days and we can't get, we've got to know that.
Well, we want to know that before three days.
You really want to put that out there?
Well, we got to have it.
I agree, but you put that out there.
Well, we got to have it. It is what it is because if it gets that bad, it's going to fall, you know, on front end. So, we need to get it so that everybody will feel comfortable if they vote for this.
I mean, I don't know if it would be that difficult to just include it as part of the monthly enrollment numbers that the board sees to allow us to judge, or at least be aware of where we are and at least have the opportunity to ask the questions to make sure that we're on target. If we're not on target, what the steps are to get back on track.
Sometimes we're surprised when things just got stopped. We've got to know ahead of that.
I'm just asking that question. The second question I had was, we're talking about the eighth grade team and the seventh grade team split. Has the possibility of bringing aides in or something to assist if there is a need? Is that possible or? Hold on, folks. Well, hold on, folks. We're trying to get some additional information here, so.
No, we didn't, we didn't have that as a consideration.
Would you have to bring some other certified teacher in or something?
No, we, that, the four middle school core subject positions, they're going to receive the same instruction they always have. We're just.
I see.
Rechanging the way the class sizes are. They'll go up a little bit, but the program will be delivered exactly how it's being delivered now.
Got it. Okay. I just wanted to verify that. Are there any other questions from board members on some of these other items? No questions? Comments?
I have a little bit of concern with going from 21 to 26. You were prepared to David Flager to go to the high school, I expect. More or less going to be push the dependent work. And this is firstly, I've heard that we're going to 26. I have a concern with that one there. For that reason. I mean, if class sizes are going to stay the same and we're going to do it, then I can see if 26 is about max amount of classroom. I could think of one more seat at max amount of classroom.
Do we have estimates for the placement of the high school over that, that number of students, do we know, administration?
When I look at it from the CNI, we're sitting at between 21 and 22 at the high school level. And a lot of the, there may head 23, but most sections, we're sitting at 21 and 22.
See, I don't, I don't have that information.
Yeah, I would say, I was looking at, looking at the fund balance. The district has a reformer in the dollars, a taxpayer in the budget, and a council. I wish, I hope, I hope that we could bring that tax increase down and also I wouldn't mind bringing that program to the county for that, considering we're sitting on that much money. I think that's a reasonable thing to do.
Well, Mr. Kurtz, I believe there's multiple, you know, the way I look at it is there's multiple curtailments that I think we should, when we go through this, we'll find that it may be there and may not be returned. And the way I approach it is, based on that response would dictate the fund balance value as well as the tax increase that if there was one, what it would be rather than just say off the top, it would be a full tax increase. So, that's the approach that I'm going to use.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, it's not, hey, it's like four, four and a half million dollars. So, I'd be a little cautious before raising taxes and cutting programs.
And I agree. I mean, coming into this tonight, I was probably going to vote no for most of these. I mean, yes, for most of these were curtailed and my mind's changed a little bit with some of the details we've gotten. So, the elementary band being one of them, probably the four middle school teachers being another. I mean, again, I'm going back to 21 to 26. I know there's only five more bodies in the room, but it's still five more bodies that you're then going to ramp down that number going into high school. So, you know, that's just personal feeling. I mean, that's, I'm struggling. You're getting in more independent work, you're getting in some higher learning and all this stuff is, you know, again, I'm using a term we keep, we've heard a lot in the curriculum is we're doing spiral learning. So, if you lose it seventh and eighth, when you get into ninth grade, you're, it's already a little late at that point with math. So, I mean, the sciences are the sciences. I mean, they're not building so much on each other. Biology doesn't really build a lot. That's like my degrees are in. But, you know, chemistry's invented, physics, but when you're looking at the math, it's spiral. You're building each year on what you learned the year before, so.
What's the dollar figure on that?
332,000.
I can't hear it.
332,000 dollars.
Which again, could be adjusted based by who's taking the positions. They get the figures.
I mean, I agree with the sentiment the board expressed. I think we talked about this last week where clearly if you're sitting on fund balance, in my opinion, that's what needs to be spent first before you implement tax increases or cutting program. I think the issue that I posed then and I pose now is how much fund balance are we willing to spend to bring program back and reduce the tax liability to the public? And, and how you, you know, and we need to make that determination. There's no additional revenues that are coming in from the state that we know of at this time and we will not find out until some time in July or later. You know, and so I would, I'm comfortable with some of the explanations that the administration has provided us that the, the laws of those programs are being, still being supported or still in their same shape or form. I'm more concerned about the controls that are implemented thereafter to make sure that we're monitoring those things as close as we can to detect any kind of variance that may arise so we can at least react quickly to it. And in the six years I've been on this board, there's never been a hesitation to hire something when someone brought it to our attention to address it. And the opposite is, is, the opposite side of the coin is that we've been very reluctant to remove those things when they're no longer needed. So, the question is, how much are these, these programs in need and how will you know until such time as they're no longer there? And how do you measure that? And I think at the end of the day, as long as I'm assured that there's some controls here and we're monitoring it on a, on a frequent basis, not quarterly or, you know, every three months or something like that, I have a better sense of comfort that we're not putting the students at risk or the school at risk. So, having said that, is there any other comment from board members in terms of these resolutions and motions and things of that nature? Any further discussion we need to have? Okay. Then I'm assuming we're ready to start moving through them one at a time. But yes?
I believe yes.
So, we have a motion to approve the elimination of the elementary encore teacher positions and we had a second. Who was the second?
Mr. Semenero.
Mr. Semenero was the second. Yes.
Mr. Semenero.
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin.
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz.
Yes.
Mr. McCollum, no.
Mr. McGlocklin. No.
Mr. Basil.
Yes.
No champagne.
Do we have a motion to approve the elimination of three and a half elementary teaching?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this issue? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
I have a question, Mr. Shihun, second by Mr. McGlocklin. Mr. Shihun?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum, no.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
No champagne.
Okay, under number three, do we have a motion to approve the elimination of one business education teacher pursuant to the resolution?
F3.
F3, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Potts. Any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please?
I have a first by Mr. Shihun, second by Mr. Potts. Mr. Wolf?
No.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum, no.
Mr. McGlocklin? Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
And Mr. Shihun?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
No champagne.
Okay, under number F4, motion to approve the elimination of one school psychologist position.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna roll call vote.
First by Mr. Shihun, second by Mr. McGlocklin. Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
No.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum, no.
Mr. McGlocklin? Yes.
Mr. Potts?
No.
Mr. Shihun?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
No.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion has been denied by four.
Guys, please, order, please. Okay, moving on, number five, motion to approve the elimination of four middle school teaching positions.
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, please, go ahead.
I have a first by Mr. Shihun, second by Mr. McGlocklin. Mrs. Hamlin?
No.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum, no.
Mr. McGlocklin? Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shihun?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
No.
Uh, Mr. Semenero?
No.
Uh, motion, uh.
Oh, you have another vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Basil?
Yes, the answer's yes.
Okay, uh, again, I'm sorry, so it's been denied.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the elimination of three elementary.
Second.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Uh, Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum, no.
Mr. McGlocklin? Yes.
Mr. Potts?
No.
Mr. Shihun?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
No.
And Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion has passed.
Okay, moving on, F7, do we have a motion?
F7, so moved, second.
Okay, any just.
I'm sorry, you second, I second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, great, roll call vote, please.
I have a first by Mr. McGlocklin, second by Mr. Shihun. Mr. McCollum, no.
Mr. McGlocklin? Yes.
Mr. Potts?
No.
Mr. Shihun?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Uh, and Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion has passed.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the elimination of one halftime science position. Okay, do we have any further discussion on this issue? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, who was second?
I was.
Sorry, I was writing, I apologize. Mr. Shihun, Mr. McGlocklin. Okay.
I wish.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
No.
Mr. Shihun?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum, no.
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
No.
Mr. Shihun?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
No.
Mr. Basil?
No.
Motion has been denied.
Okay, moving on to nine, motion.
So moved, second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. McCollum, when you're ready.
Um, Mr. McGlocklin, first, and Mr. Wolf is second. Mr. Potts?
No.
Mr. Shihun?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
No.
Mr. Semenero?
No.
Mrs. Hamlin?
No.
Mr. Kurtz?
No.
Mr. McCollum, no.
Mr. McGlocklin? No.
And Mr. Basil?
No.
Motion has been denied.
Okay. Moving on to number 10.
So moved for number 10.
As amended.
Yeah, can I, um.
Second.
Second, okay, I just want to.
I have a question.
I just want to clarify, based on the preceding votes, with the resolution, we had a draft resolution presented to the board, the modifications to that resolution would be the elimination of the sectional curtail development program, and the alteration of middle school program. As to the elimination of positions, the following will no longer be included in the resolution, it's one school psychologist, and also four middle school teaching positions, and then finally two elementary band positions, but otherwise, the motion as originally drafted and now modified would be before the board for a vote.
And is that acceptable to Mr. McGlocklin and Mr. Shihun?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Semenero?
No, it was Mr. McGlocklin and Mr. Potts.
I'm sorry.
Okay, any questions or comments from board members? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
So I have a first by Mr. McGlocklin, and second by Mr. Potts, with the modifications that Mr. Zubers has said. Mr. Shihun?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum, yes.
Yes.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion has passed.
Okay, do we have a motion for F11?
Second.
Okay, second. Any further discussion on this issue? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
I have a first of Mr. Shihun, and second by Mr. McGlocklin. Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum, yes.
Yes.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion has passed.
Okay, do we have a motion for F11?
Second.
Okay, second. Any further discussion on this issue? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
I have a first of Mr. Shihun, and second by Mr. McGlocklin. Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum, yes.
Yes.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
No champagne.
Okay, moving on to financial approvals.
A through G. A through G, we have a first and a second. First.
One of us is first one.
First over here, second over here, Mr. Shihun.
Mr. McGlocklin first, Mr. Shihun second.
Got it, okay. And, any discussion? All right, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Again, and Mr. McGlocklin first, Mr. Shihun second, Mr. Semenero, I'm sorry, 12 A through G.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Semenero, yes. Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shihun?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion has passed.
Okay, moving on to H, motion to approve the.
12 H. Second.
Okay, we have a first and we have a second. Okay, in terms of discussion?
Just like to say that if we approved it, does not raise taxes, that would even have to be voted, and that would be a tax increase.
No, this one, yours got a points.
But seeing I was planning on voting for.
No, 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 this is the way you write this.
This is the post.
Don't you.
But the post budget does raise taxes.
Right, but this. This doesn't do it.
Raise taxes.
Right. Thank you. The, I mean, again, I'm gonna ask that the programs that we reinstated come out of fund balance, and would then raise the amount of fund balance that we would use.
To half a million.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
Short of increasing, adding one of the exceptions.
Let's get those numbers nailed.
Right, what was, what were two, three, three items that were.
Reinstate.
Reinstate it, if you will, so can we get the dollars on those? First one was the school psychologist. I don't have it for.
Eighty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-seven.
Right, it's ninety.
Ninety thousand.
And then the next one was.
Three-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand.
But wait, that's gonna change.
Oh, great.
The psychologists won't, but the rest of them are gonna change because of what you kept in, what you took out.
Yeah, it's false. I just want to know what it was last week, last week. What it was here.
Five-hundred, five-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand.
One-eighty, one-seventy for the ban.
One-seventy for the ban, three-thirty for the middle school, and ninety for the psychologists.
As of what it was last week when all nine were.
On the table.
Right, on the table.
And this proposed final. And this budget shows how much out of fund balance prior to those.
One-point-four.
One-point-four?
One-point-one.
So we're looking at, so we're looking at two million dollars out of fund balance.
One-point-one or one-point-four?
It's one-point-one as of what is in your man.
Okay, so again, round all numbers.
I think that's the APC calculation, so one-point-one, you're now talking another six-hundred thousand, it's one-point-seven.
Yeah, we could. I know you like to round with one-point-seven to two-million dollars.
One-point-seven million.
One-point-seven.
Oh, okay, there are other changes that are not in this budget.
Leaving a remaining balance of two-point-seven, thereabouts, fund balance.
As of April.
As of April's numbers.
I'm just clarifying.
What is the amount of the point-six-six-one mils, points-two?
About six-hundred-and-sixty-six.
Okay.
Six-hundred, six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars. That's all.
I mean, I still take the position that, you know, you have a substantial amount of fund balance left, and I don't see any reason why the taxpayers should pay the front of that when you're still sitting on some fund balance.
I have a, I have a tax, I would say, some of these programs, and we deserve to reduce that tax, but as much as possible, bring the zero, like six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars out of fund balance, in addition, you know, what we say, we will remove from anywhere, and change. If, if, let's just run the numbers, okay? We used, we're at one-point-seven, we use six-hundred, we're at two-point-three-six or two-point-four around, out of fund balance, if we do that.
Yeah, I think it was two-point-seven.
It's about two-point-seven million.
You're using one-point-seven. Right now, if we did, if we do the tax increase, maybe we have to make that up.
Two-point-three.
So it's a two-point-three, two-point-four out of fund balance.
Leaving a balance of two-point-oh-four.
Two-point-one, fraction two-point-one, what do we need to make through?
That's our working capital.
And, again, that, that's, it's something, we make it a little better than what we're projecting, tend to, so we have enough working capital without having to do the tax increase.
When would the business office be reviewing the numbers to update the fund balance?
I just sent marketing email to have the number to you guys by Thursday.
Thursday. Okay. I mean, I would, I would like to make a motion that the placeholder be put in here for, for the removal of the, of the real estate tax, and obviously, we can reevaluate that in June, depending on where we are.
I'll second that.
Do we have any other further discussion on that issue?
To eliminate tax increase. I don't know if we're gonna say eliminate tax increase, you wanna say, but it's eliminating, but we use two, I'd like the motion to reuse two-point, what did you say, two-point-four?
And, Noah, I have a question, before we get too far, Mr. Zubers, for clarification, can Mr. Basil set?
Kind of talk.
Okay, can Mr. Basil create a motion?
Yeah.
I'm just asking, for, for formal purposes, okay, he needs to set up a motion, I'm not, you understand my question?
Under formal Roberts rules, technically, the chair, the board president's chair, doesn't have, cannot make the motion, but I believe we practice them, and Daniel Boe has.
Again, I'm not trying to, I'm not making a motion. Okay, that's all right, I'm just asking. Okay, that's all right, I'm just asking.
I'll second his motion.
Okay.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
I, I would just like the amount of, just rounded fund balance that would be used as part of that motion.
Well, let's see, it was one point one plus.
We're at one point seven, we're using six, and we're looking at, at two point three six million dollars of fund balance.
Two point three six.
Two point three six million dollar potential fund balance. Subject to change based upon the numbers.
That's where you want me to take the differences from, just by now.
And we obviously give about two point one million. For clarification, is the vote to remove the tax increase? Correct. Placehold for the.
Listen, I want to clarify, this is for a proposed final budget. That has to be a balanced budget off.
Yes.
So if you're eliminating the tax increase, then it has, there has to be a corollary reduction.
Fund balance.
So if that's the direction, then that's what the business manager will do.
Correct.
But she has to balance, she has to present a balanced budget. So if you're eliminating that tax increase, you can do that, and then she's going to revise the budget as presented this evening by allocating additional fund balance to offset that. Just for clarification.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I mean, this year, we began the budget discussions, because we asked the administration to come back to us and say, balance the budget for us. And in that discussion, included things that we felt more untouchable, kindergarten, extracurricular activities, and what just transpired tonight. Now we're farther in the hole next year, and we're.
Hold up. Go ahead.
I'm not saying that I'm supporting a tax increase, but last year, I think a lot of us felt that we should look ahead and see what's going to come back next year. All I'm saying is, the only thing I would like to say is, is make sure that whatever we do tonight or next month, that we're not raking those people over the coals again next year, talking about eliminating the half-day kindergarten or extracurriculars and those things that we put back in tonight. Can, can, is there a way forward through, through next year?
I think, Mr. Wolf, and I support, understand, I, I support what you're saying, and, and I fully understand that, but the only reason I would even, even consider this is a couple of reasons. How much fund balance do we have in this current year's budget that we're going to use?
We're going to use one point three million dollars of fund balance.
One point three million, plus seven hundred thousand dollar good guy that we're going to throw surplus. Okay, and that, that's my, that's the only reason I would consider this is that, in, I would have to say, and again, I totally agree with you, but I've been on the board seven years, and we've thrown a surplus seven years, and that included, in most years, was the amount of the tax increase. So that's, that's the concern I've gotten with going out and, and, and not giving, giving another tax increase and throwing another surplus. All those problems probably go with the tax increase. Sure, I have colleagues, I, I have no problem in saying, hey, it's, it's not tax to public. I'm just, my point is, let's make sure we're, you know, I want to do what's responsible, not necessarily what's popular, and I just want to make sure we're looking ahead, and, you know, a lot of us won't be here next month, next year, but, you know, we're, what we do for the next two months is really going to impact those folks who are sitting in these chairs next, next year. I just want to make sure we're doing what's responsible, you know, and if the responsible is cutting the taxes, all right, fine, then no one should be coming back and saying, hey, you know, I wish I would have voted this way, because I didn't realize that there's not going to be enough money to fund kindergarten or extracurriculars next year. And that's why it's not going through this exercise of how to, how to, you know, find additional funds to fund the things kids need to go on to college for scholarships and other things. That's all, that's my only point.
Mr. Shune, I agree with you, I agree with what you say, and I'm, I'm part of one on the board, and everybody accuses me of being this raised taxes. I will go for a no tax increase, but my problem was, we eliminated stuff tonight. If that is the way I do that, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, it's important, you made, you made a decision, and that's fine, and we can still go back where we first. My concern is, and you're right, if there's a surplus, I agree, it's the taxpayers giving back. I agree to a no tax increase if there is that money. My problem is, all those years that we did it, and we threw a little bit of surpluses, but the problem is, we didn't eliminate anything. We're eliminating stuff now. That's a problem. We went for full day-to-half day kindergarten. We're, we're increasing, you know, we've eliminated a couple of other things tonight. That's my concern. If there's a way to do this, and I'm not, I don't know the way, if I knew the way, we would all figure this out a month ago. Point I'm trying to make is, I, I don't object to lowering the index, going through the index. You know, I had a lot of problem lowering the tax amount. I do have a problem, though, that we're going to do it, we're going to use fund balance, and we also eliminated stuff. That's my concern. And I'm not asking for an answer, because I know you don't have it, I don't think any of the nine people on this board have an answer right now.
I mean, I think for me, the, the one issue that keeps coming up, and unfortunately, it tends to be lost when you're sitting here, is you have, you know, probably another fifteen to sixteen thousand people in this community that, that pay taxes into the school district to support it, not including the businesses that spend a lot of money supporting the school district as well. And you have several that are teetering on the edge of insolvency. You have folks that are in, you know, have had their homes foreclosed upon, they're having a difficult time making their mortgages. I know lots of people in my community that are on fixed incomes that struggle every month with paying their bills. So, and, and a lot of those homes now have for sale signs on them, and so I have an issue with, I'm sorry, we'll ask people to leave if you keep interrupting the board discussion. There'll be an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting, okay? As I was saying, I think the issue for me is always one of, you can't take a tax increase back. We haven't never taken a tax increase back. You sit there, well.
Yes, we did one year.
Yes, we did.
You gave a little bit of a refund, but we've, we've, well, you threw a million-dollar surplus. So at the end of the day, ever since I've sat on this board, we've thrown surplus after surplus after surplus, and there was never a need to raise taxes. And I had a very hard time going to somebody and saying, well, look, we're going to raise your taxes yet again, and we haven't demonstrated a need yet. You start throwing deficits, then there's a need to start raising some taxes. I think we also have witnessed over the last few years, an ability to take some things out that have been nice to have for a long period of time, and we didn't witness the reckoning that everyone has, had anticipated. AIDS, we were told, we take the AIDS out of the building, our test scores are going to drop, you know, the, the world was, the bottom was going to fall out, and test scores have actually gone up. We removed the library, and we were told that was the worst thing that could possibly happen to the school district. And we haven't witnessed the, the decline in scores. We removed middle school foreign language. You know, I haven't heard from any of our administrators over the last three or four years, whether it's half-day kindergarten or whatnot, that, that there's been a negative impact overall to the school district. And maybe there will be one that, that presents itself in time, and we'll need to address it, but until that has been identified, I, I don't, I don't see how you can sit there and say, you can't do without it until you have tried at least to do without. And I think we owe that to the taxpayer to try. Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
The motion is, the budget as presented, but it'll be a note that said that I have a point six six one mil increase, it'll be zero. And it was first by.
And that it can be balanced, the budget can be balanced.
Now, I have a question, Mr. Subers, because that was added, whose motion is this? The first one, and Mr. Sheen, and Mr.?
Well, I, I think it's given the fund balance asked to be used, that there's no tax increase, that's the only place to take the money from, because that's the balance.
Do the, the persons, persons who presented the motion second.
I would draw my portion of, of that part, meaning that we talked about using the specific fund balance together, so.
It's my motion.
It's your motion. You're seconding, so you're in agreement, and we have a friendly revision to the motion based on my earlier statements.
So it's first by Mr. Semenaro, and second by Mr. Sheen, that there's no tax increase.
Mr. Kurtz.
I actually, I didn't matter.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Kurtz. Okay, Mrs. Hamel.
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, Epstein.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Shune.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro.
Yes.
And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, moving on to programs. There's a motion to approve the thirteen fourteen assessment test schedule.
A through E.
A through E, we have a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Kurtz.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Shune.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro.
Yes.
And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, policy.
A through H. Second.
First reading. Okay, A through H, we have a first and we have a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote?
I'm just asking, I want to ask you a question, that Mr. Subers has involved these, this has no issue with.
Okay, can we?
Reading through the first, the pages for the motions. Yes, yes, yes. The others are just reading through.
Okay, so it's, it's A through H, it's Mr. Sheen and Mr. Semenaro. Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Shune.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel.
Yes.
And Mr. Kurtz.
Yes.
And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, moving on to old business.
No, transportation, Mr. Basil.
I'm sorry, yeah, transportation, there was nothing there.
Okay.
Thank you. Old business? We have on here Market Street Sports Group update.
They have been in touch with me, Mr. Bertoni. They are ready to come out and do what they call their assessment of trying to find out who might be eligible to be able to do some advertising with us. I know Mr. Subers was cleaning up, just, Mr. Subers, if you want to just.
The, the agreement's finalized, it's approved, we're just, I was thinking that I wanted to get over to, to Market Street, so we're on board here, they're just not holding anything up and coming out. I just, Dr. Howard presented.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, initial questions for Market Street? Seeing none, Title IX update?
I do have an update on that, I have been on, engaging, continuing discussions with the Office for Civil Rights, but as a matter of non-technical litigation, I want to provide that to the board in executive session.
Okay.
I've gotten a few emails from the public asking, when will the details of who and what that is about? I mean, somebody filed, if I'm not mistaken, definitely were told, and that, again, it's being looked at, so the question is, when will they understand, when will we know what that was, and file?
To be honest with you, I've been focused on, you know, the Office for Civil Rights, I'll have to see what if they, if there are any, you know, what OCR's position is regarding releasing the information as to the initial complaint.
I mean, I, I would assume, once it's, it's settled and everything's done, then it's public knowledge and everything's announced.
We're, we're, I, I hope to have a resolution soon on the matter, but as far as disclosure of the initial complaint, I'm not sure what OCR's policy is on that, I'll check, the, I would, my understanding is that once the resolution is reached, that that resolution will be public.
Okay, any other questions? And new business.
Mr. Subers, in the fully activity tonight, did you have an opportunity to research?
Oh, yes, I did, we did clarify that issue. There is a, it's not a contractual obligation, a practice in the district post for extracurricular positions, but the suggestion from Mr. Hanfield is that we make the appointment an interim appointment. The petition has been posted, but not for the requisite number of days, so we would, if we wanted to proceed, we proceed with an interim appointment, subject to the expiration of the posting timeline, then a recommendation next month's meeting for a permanent.
Appointment.
Appointment.
Can we make that an interim business then?
I think that's where we are, in new business.
Yeah, we just, yes, an interim business.
So, with that, I'd like to make a motion, and we have to vote Justin McGaddams as interim Marchman Director with the posting of how many days?
I believe it's a ten-day posting, it's already been posted, but we're going to append in the expiration of the posting requirements or satisfaction of any posting requirements and presentation of a recommendation for a permanent appointment next month.
And then we'll have the committee of the whole, we vote?
You could do it at the committee of the whole.
For the final vote.
Can we, I mean, is there, and I'm not sure what the law, we're allowed to do this, but we have the ability to ask Mr. McGaddams to join the board in the executive session to discuss the issues in executive session, or does that have to be in the public?
No, you could, you could meet in executive session regarding the appointment issue like that.
Okay, then I, I will second yours with the stipulation that Mr. McGaddams needs to report in executive session after his permanent appointment to, to discuss some concerns with the passing of the board as.
Oh, well, wait, I mean, if it's.
As standing.
Okay, if it's regarding his appointment, I, I would be under an executive session exception if it related to his appointment, it's not, I think, you know, there's others.
Before.
Yeah, before.
So we need to have an executive session prior to.
Okay.
Otherwise, they may no longer.
Prior to the voting, the committee of the whole.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, I support that as well.
No, I mean, that was my, no, I seconded that stipulation.
You okay with that?
Yes.
On your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Dr. Howard, are you comfortable with this appointment?
Yes, I am. The, the concern that I had had before, when we discussed it, was there were some issues that the individual that was in the position was still in that position, but with that resignation, that opened up that position, so, yes, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the motion? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Shune.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel.
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
And motion passed.
Okay. Presentation on the public on issues.
Good evening, Joe Correia, what are you afraid of, should be dragged up this morning? So, okay, so tonight, the vote was to take two point four million out of fund balance. Salary next year will be roughly two million dollars. That's four point four million behind when we get to December. What's the plan?
The plan will be to address salaries and benefits next year, either with the use of fund balance, taxes, funds from the state, wherever the funds may be come from, where we may also have to review, we may also have to review additional cuts in the future.
So, the teacher's contract is in place in full next year, there's no obligation for the teachers to open their contract, am I correct?
That's correct. Teachers have no obligation to open their contract.
So we have to find four point four million dollars from cuts that all you restored was about a half million, call it six hundred thousand, what was going on. So, you know, throw in another five, six hundred thousand from kindergarten, and then the net from the sports, I just don't see how you come anywhere close to bridging four and a half million dollars and to not raise taxes, and trust me, I don't want taxes coming up. But I don't, I don't know how you can responsibly sit there and say, you're at all looking forward what I do when you, you agreed to tonight. So I'd really, really encourage you, and I would love to see a, a presentation of a three-year forecast of what, you know, the district's finances project out to be, so that by the time the public gets its opportunity to review the proposed budget that was passed, and I think the public has a right to know what the projection is over the next couple of years, and what this figure will be. Thank you.
Thank you. And to answer your question, Mr. Correia, for me, the decision isn't very difficult in the sense that we were, this board was sitting on a fund balance, the highest I've witnessed in the six years that I've been here, and as much as we have, you know, projected to use fund balance from one year to the next, we have never used what we set out to allocate for that particular year, last year, this current year, the year before, the year before that. And so I have a hard time approving a tax increase and removing all program from the budget when we haven't nailed that down yet. And I think that there's always an opportunity to raise taxes, there's always an opportunity to raise taxes to the index plus special exceptions. There was, I don't think there was a, a will here at the board to take it all the way up to the, I gave you your opportunity to speak and ask your questions, I'm not taking any more questions on it, okay? Yes, so I'm answering your question, okay? And so, as a board, we are looking to address a multi-year budget going forward, we've contracted with a third party, provide us with that tool, so we can accurately forecast what our obligations are going to be from one year to the next, to the best of our ability, and more importantly, our revenues.
Speaking for the data, the taxpayer activist, I'd like to thank the board for not only eliminating the tax increase, but also saving the programs, we saved. I'd also like to remind the board and the audience that nobody tonight discussed at all the potential revenue for leasing out the ABC, that's still sitting there, and that can all just add back to the fund balance.
Correct.
Thank you.
Jenny, no longer three sixty-five, raise the drive in W. Spill. So a couple of real quick things. We have a huge fund balance, we didn't raise taxes, we cut fourteen teachers, which is five percent of the teacher population, and we spent six months to save two hundred thousand dollars on activities, are you serious? Secondly, going off of that, it's absolutely ridiculous that we're making kids pay for activities and sports to save two hundred thousand dollars in the RAC team, when we have four point four million dollar fund balance. That's, that's, six months, the RAC team's six months, really, a revenue enhancement committee, and that's bringing them up with two hundred thousand dollars plus. I mean, come on. Then when you have parents paying activity fees, what do the coaches, what opportunity do they have to tell people, well, we have a starting five hundred basketball team? Well, all the kids pay the same amount of money, so they should all be on the court for every game, right? That sounds great. Then we have, okay, getting off of that, so it's like we cut five percent of the teachers, why do we still have the same number of admin? Let's get rid of five percent. That's one person. We do not need the same number of bosses if we don't have the same number of employees. And thirdly, Mr. Basil, your arrogance is not appreciated. We're discussing.
Thank you for your comments.
A little three sixty-seven budget. A year ago, I came to one, to this meeting, where we were discussing the budget, and there was a three million dollar gap that you closed by not raising taxes, you made some cuts, and you used fund balance. And I remember Mr. Sheen sitting there very vividly saying, if we use this much fund balance, we're that much more in the hole starting next year. How much more in the hole are we this year? We're not. We didn't use any of the fund balance that you were so worried about using a year ago, and in fact, we're throwing a surplus on top of that. So this fear of using as much as we can, when we're, we don't use the maximum, but we're cutting programs that affect the children, the basic skills, especially the encore, those kids love those things. We've got four point four million dollars, and Mr. Basil, you said, for seven years, we've thrown a budget surplus, usually whatever the tax increase has been. Last year, you didn't have a tax increase, we're still throwing a budget. That says to me, there's an issue with the way that this school district formulates its budget. I don't know what the answer is, because the way that you put it out there, the way the state requires it, the average person can't look at that and figure out what's, what's goes for tails. There is a problem if every year, we throw a surplus, but we're cutting.
cutting programs. My next question, because Mrs. Hamlin, I did send this email to the revenue enhancement committee, and feel free to share it with the other board members, my question to you is, you keep saying that the activities cost is six hundred eighty-five million, where are the revenues from the ticket sales being counted in order?
They won't even have a part.
Okay, when you figure out the cost, because it's my understanding that football is the most expensive sport that there is that we have, because of equipment, things like that, where those ticket sales used to offset their costs, when you figured it out? Okay, in my email, I did point out to you that I do believe, and there is a court case that states that any revenues drawn in through ticket sale cannot be offset before the justice court, it needs to cover the entire fund, so therefore, that money can't just offset football, it has to offset all of the expenses. You know, the thing that everyone else made was, you have a wintertier system that you have, I am more than willing to pay my share, I have a child who went into high school, high school and middle school athletics cannot be compared the same, they are not held to the same standards, I can tell you, like my example, middle school boys' basketball played fourteen games, the high school, twenty were on their schedule, but you're going to make it each day the same, there is no opportunity for revenue to be generated from the middle school athletics, and the last season volleyball or basketball, you tell me how you're going to collect revenue, from the football field, the field house, the field field, the soccer field, to the softball field, out there in that open area, so you're going to incentivize those students?
Ms. Serena, you're at three minutes.
Okay, so please feel free to share my email, I would love to address those issues.
Thank you.
Good evening, Lindsey McGregor, Springview Drive, Douglasville. As freshman president this year, I participated in eight clubs at our high school, I was elected lieutenant governor my freshman year, and that is the board across Pennsylvania. We've had an amazing year, and our clubs have participated in so many amazing events. Our senior class this year was absolutely incredible, and helped us do so many things. Next year, we are going to have, we're going to need to replace them with more students joining our clubs, but if we charge each club fifty-five dollars, I'm concerned, our students won't take interest. My sister joins my side of the high school next year, and I'm already concerned and thinking about things that I'm going to have to not participate in next year, because our families simply will not be able to afford it. This weekend, I participated in Relate Your Life, where I overheard someone say, the Daniel Boone is one of the most remarkable schools in Berks County, and she's right, our teachers and our students are the most amazing people you will ever meet, our courage and our determination, and our love for our school is incredible, and means things that face challenges every single day. Our teachers and our clubs get us ready to be leaders for tomorrow's future. Twenty years from now, we'll be listening in your sense, making the same hard decisions that you are making today, these clubs and our teachers allow us to have the opportunities to learn how to before, think about that, thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Swanson, one twelve, Cameron Drive. I kind of want to reiterate what Lindsey said, I've been in the school at the Daniel Boone Elementary School District for twelve years, I began kindergarten here, and this year I'll be graduating from Daniel Boone High School. This district drew amazing teachers like Mr. Pettit, who you just heard from earlier tonight, have shaped me, challenged me, helped me grow into who I am, I have contributed a lot to the district too. In high school, I have been involved in over ten organizations and held leadership positions in more than half. I co-founded the Gentry Alliance, I founded the Literary Magazine, I have served on the district diversity committee with Dr. Otto and Mr. Shakin. None of this would have happened if the activity fee was what you are proposing tonight. This past year, I paid my own fifty dollar activity fee from money I earned with the minimum wage at Little Nicky's Pizza, I remember selling a movie pizza, if I, if I had to pay fifty-five dollars per club, it would not have been feasible, I urge you to lower the seven hundred fifty dollar cap, because a fee this informative is discriminatory towards lower income students. Without being able to participate in these activities, students will be at a disadvantage when applying for college and scholarships, their income should not determine their futures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bill Trainer, two, Mississippi, Quillisville. I'd like to come back and address the, the fees we're talking about for the activity program, and the situation is Thursday, ready paper came out in the morning, that talked about what the fees were going to be, it was the first time anybody could see them, that afternoon was the playoff game, with the game of the boys that got an effort with the other, the goal score we had, so copies of that paper ended up in the stands, where just, nobody really had much of a chance to look at this, and it was fascinating to be just sitting there listening to the comics as they got passed through, and there was a question, one of the first ones, I heard somebody said, my God, can you understand, family A is going to spend two thousand dollars, somebody else turned around and said, well, you think that's something, mine's going to be one thousand eight hundred, somebody else came to and said, I think I'm going to be close to one thousand five hundred, they also talked about the fee for the, the clubs, they said, well, fifty bucks wasn't all that bad, if you go through the, but now it's up to fifty-five, they said, the real problem is that every time you join a club, there's another ten bucks, and that's sixty-five, they were putting that in, that touched off a conversation about where does the money go, this has already been touched on, and they said, well, it goes to the general fund, that money can end up just as easily fixing up a hinge on the front door as it will my foot, and they said, no, that's really, we're not sure, so there was much confusion, much surprise, much anger, at that meeting, and people were trying to listen to practice, they may end up in a mess, but I think this was Mr. Trinder mentioned, that Kurtz had mentioned, that as you raise those fees, different group of population, it's just that simple, and we have seen this coming from people saying, I'm not sure, I'm not playing lessons like you. Wasn't that many months ago, we had talked about eliminating sports entirely, are there people who are in favor of that, there are some who say, look, freeze, get us out of here, and through your conversation throughout the meeting, you have indicated that they're really not sure what's going to happen next year, and year after year, but right now, with your rising seniors coming up, there still is a very tiny window for them to make their own choices, to make their own way, but they have to be free before they can do that. Also, the other quarter of the discussion that they got into, was, you know, the very end of the thing was about the people might able to pack, and said, well, if there's going to be some kind of improvement, that if you're facing financial difficulties, we'll take care of it somehow, and when they figure, so, well, the average percentage of students states something like fourteen percent, it's a man, you're talking about thirty-six percent of students, it's a chunk of people that give charity, if in fact, that's what you're having. Now, another discussion was on, maybe they should drop certain sports, because sports should come, I'm not in a position to say that's what you should build.
Sir, I don't mean to interrupt, but we've reached our three minutes, we can close, please, thank you, sir.
I did.
No, thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Amy Hicks, what do you drive, Douglasville? First of all, I just want to say thank you for the programs that you've been choosing to maintain, I just wanted to make a correction to Jenny Noether, she stated that five percent of staff had been eliminated, the actual numbers, from what I understand tonight, were eleven full-time teachers, two half-time teachers, with an additional fourteen teachers having been devoted, that is a reflection, ten percent of our staff, I just want to make sure that the public was aware of those emotions, are fourteen people that are now from full-time to part-time. Additionally, this has remained with a complete refusal of accepting reduction in our salaries, since this budget is not, yeah, I guess history will change over the next couple of weeks, I'd like to encourage the public to continue coming to the junior meetings, even though it's a little bit rough, because maybe we can still see about encouraging the school board to not just drastically make these cuts, even though there's more revenue available to that, or at least the savings in expenditure, thank you.
And, and five ball, A.B. Rice, Missy, and Tuckusville, and this pertains to the sport activity, and my son played volleyball for the last forty years, and this team has come from nothing, they were losing everything that they, they played, except basketball, basketball, to me, this year, we actually, counties and districts, because it actually came to earth, participating in summer camps, wear clubs, just to improve this program, but it's very costly to do that, and if volleyball team has six players on the court, you cannot put thirty, and then people never take it, and when you keep adding thirty people in a meeting, winning to cross country, it doesn't matter who the kids are having to choose, but for a team like volleyball or basketball, there are very limited, how many kids you can have, you can't change those rules, so to me, saying, your kid has to pay three hundred dollars to play that sport, is wanting to turn their participation, and you're just going to bring the whole world difference, or, you know, nothing, and also you're putting a strike on the coaches, because you're telling them, I'm, I'm paying three hundred dollars, maybe you should play it, you know, what am I doing, coming here and sitting in the bench, and again, I have to pay this kind of money, and, you know, if you have a basketball player, a volleyball player, that's six hundred dollars, it's very different now, you're, I think you're discriminating against those children who do not have the capabilities of running five, five games, you know, some kids get hurt during that, my kid had this stress fracture, year after year, because he wasn't supposed to keep playing, he did quit, and loved volleyball, so, to me, there's, there's a lot to think about, and also the entry, when you charge four dollars for a student to come and watch a game, you might get ten, fifteen to come, charge them one or two dollars, you might get a hundred, and better really have an encouraging crowd, and they back up their students, they try to come, you know, and sometimes you have to hand out the money, just so that they're not standing at the door waiting for the second hand to be offered, so they can come in front of you, that doesn't raise much weight when they have to just wait out there until they don't have to pay anything to them, but charge them, you know, just a little amount of money for that, that's what to get, that kind of money, but to me, a student should pay four dollars, which is very encouraging, but they're fellow students that participate in this sport, that's all I have to say.
Ask this question once more, I've asked it many times. I heard a motoring of volunteers up here, there will be no volunteers working any of these bargaining unit jobs throughout the school district that has been left go or presently or future, will there be?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Mr. Templeton?
There will be no volunteer workers coming in, working any bargaining unit job that in this school district.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, because I'm telling you, once it happens, against labor regulations, labor regulations, and you're going to have a lot of lawsuits, I'll use that one, and as I say again, there is a light at the end of the tunnel, get a new governor that cares about our education more than this big business.
Thank you.
I'm Deja Jol, three one, Bridge Lenny, and I'm here, I wanted to talk about the basic elementary skills being cut, I also sent a letter to Dr. Otto last week, and I'm not sure if he got it, but the one thing that I have been talking about for eleven years that I've been in this school district, is the fact that the kids are not changing classes at the elementary level, and, you know, you all are concerned about law suits and benchmarks, and if you just go back to just teaching, putting your best teachers in those classrooms and teaching, you can walk away from those benchmarks that you're so focused on, and arm it up with all your lawyers, if you just have great teachers, and I say this over and over again, because, you know, when you go into a classroom, you see a teacher teaching to five levels, five different levels in one classroom, I can understand that kids are changing classes, fifth grade, or third, fourth, fifth grade, math, but why are they not doing the reading? Why? It's ridiculous, and we see the score plummeting, and I told the teachers who have said over and over again, I wish that I could teach a class on the same level, and you all are concerned more about the kids with I.E.P.s, what about all the kids? What about sending them to class? What about the third graders, and the fourth graders, and the first graders, and the second graders, that the teacher has to teach five different levels in a classroom? Those kids should be allowed to change classes, what is wrong with a teacher stepping outside the door, watching those kids go to another classroom, with a teacher who can teach their grade level, in first grade, you know, it's awful when a teacher has to say, I'm going to do my best to meet your child's needs, that's not acceptable, it's just not acceptable. Dr. Otto, I see you looking down, and I hope that you got my email, this is something I talked to Mrs. Sero about, and I think it was, you know, when my son was in first, second grade, I was fighting for additional reading for my son, and I thought it was wrong to have a principal who was a reading specialist sitting in her office, and didn't do anything to pay attention to my son, to help him with his needs, and there was other kids in my son's school who were high readers, but they, when you're told by a kindergarten teacher, I'm not concerned about your child, I'm concerned about the ones who are falling behind, well, you know, that's why I took you all to court many years ago, and you were, they found you all guilty of failure to educate, because you have to teach all kids, not just the ones who are falling behind, and I want you to understand that, you're going to warm up for all these people with I.E.P.s, but you better worry about the kids who are sitting in the classroom, in the regular classroom, who are going to be getting lawyers next, because if you keep cutting programs, and you're not, you're putting all this weight on one teacher to teach twenty-five kids at different levels, if you were just sending them all, based on that level, put them in the reading class, the teacher will be helping.
Okay, ma'am, we're at three minutes, thank you.
I, my checkbook bleeds blue, I pay for every activity that my children, my daughter is in, my daughter is in ten clubs, she's in ten clubs, and she is in.
Ma'am, we're exceeding the three minutes.
I understand that.
Thank you, okay, next, please.
Angie, six seven, three thirty, Boris Perot. Couple of things, first I want to say, I really appreciate you hearing from the Blazer Foundation tonight, I'm very encouraged, I think, you know, you've all been looking for a lot of ways to increase revenue, and I think that that is a viable option, and I'm really hoping that things will progress there, and just encouraging you to hear. Secondly, I want to thank you for the programs that you did save, I'm disappointed in the ones that haven't been saved, I'm hoping that that might change before the end of the year, and I would encourage you to work with your contractual partners to see if something that could be worked out so that we can save more of these programs, because a comment was made that, something to the effect of, you know, we've cut these things, the librarian, and other things over the last few years, and we haven't had any real catastrophic type things happen, you know, like everybody predicted and all of this, I would say that you're not necessarily going to see something happening in the first couple of years that we cut something, it's something that's going to come down the road, and I would ask a rhetorical question, just for you to think about, you know, we're talking about, you know, some of these cuts that were made were based on declining enrollment, why? Why the declining enrollment, is it a life cycle thing, maybe it is circle of life, but maybe, just maybe, some of the declining enrollment has to do with the fact that people are leaving the district, who are having children, they're coming to school late, and they're going, you know. they're going, you know, but Daniel Boone is just, things are too crazy. They're talking about cutting this and cutting that. I wanna go to the school district where there's stability, where I don't, I don't, you know, I'm not. And many of you are all, you're all, you're there for that very same reason. They're coming in and they're saying, I wanna go into a district that's got quality education. And they're not seeing the fact of those teachers that we have. And they're not seeing the fact of the students that we have. So you gotta ask yourself, why the declining enrollment? Again, I appreciate what you all have done and, you know, I could go on and talk about the activity fees and all. I've got a daughter who wants to do several clubs next year and a couple of sports. Is it going to be difficult? Yeah, it probably is. And if my two boys were still in school, uh, here in the Daniel Boone District, I don't know that we would be able to afford it. If we, you know, we wouldn't, wouldn't be able to afford for them to all do the sports and the clubs that they wanted to do. So I would ask you to continue to work on that and come up with a solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. As a reminder, folks, remember, the activity fee issue is going to be discussed at the Revenue Enhancement Committee. And so your feedback there would be even, I think, more important because that's where the recommendations are gonna come up to the board at the end of the day. Okay? Thanks.
First, I'd like to call out the members in the middle of the procession. I just find odd that we talked before and then hear your information and then you vote. We don't get to react to the information you give us and then we get to talk afterwards, after you're in the board.
Just so you understand, sir, the committee, the whole meeting, we have an opportunity for the public to speak. That's a workshop meeting. There's an opportunity for the public to speak on every single issue as we go through them throughout that meeting. At the voting meeting, obviously, we're here to conduct the business of the, of the, of the district and we provide an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting for the public to speak on every single issue and at the end of the meeting for the public to speak on any issue that concerns them.
Okay. I've got twenty seconds. And also, secondly, I'd like to point out that clubs and activities, whenever you add a fee to them, you change their nature from being privileges that kids get to do to rights that they have because they pay. Changing the nature of what's going on, you guys already know that, so I won't touch on that. I'd like to quote what you said earlier, Mr. Breslin, that taxes can't be taken back. Fortunately, class size increases, class time cuts, activity fees, and halftime kindergarten are taxes on education. You haven't seen any decreases in test scores because the teachers have stepped up, they've doubled. And it seems that it's proven that halftime kindergarten doesn't do anything obvious and that increased class sizes up to twenty-six are okay now. And we can cut down arc down to thirty minutes, that, well, why would we not have to increase it? There's no point because taxes can't be taken back. So the teachers have already stepped up, the students have already stepped up. And now, I think, whenever you talk about tax increases, you have to ask whether the community should step up.
Okay, well, I will respond to that. I think the community has stepped up for the last fifteen years as they watched their taxes increase unabated to eight percent a year. People who had maybe a tax liability of one or two thousand dollars a year is now five, six, eight thousand dollars a year. You have people living in an Amity Township over in Woods Edge who live in a simple four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath house, maybe costs two-hundred thousand dollars, but they're paying twelve thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes. Well, let me finish, let me finish, okay? So I think the community has stepped up. The community has built this beautiful building that we're sitting in here today. They built a beautiful track up at the high school. They added an annex, they built the monocracy building, and that comes at a cost. And the taxpayer has fronted that liability upfront. We put smart boards in every classroom, we put in computers in it. All right. We have put in hundreds of thousands of dollars of smart boards into this school district in addition to millions of dollars of computer hardware into this school district. We've spent a considerable sum of money to give our kids the advantages that we all want them to have. We don't relish the decisions that are before us. None of us likes the decisions that are before us. But I have sat on this board for six years and I have watched a lot of things get added to the budget like that without a question. When there was a question of, do we need more aides for this? Do we need another math teacher for that? It was added with very little deliberation as to why it was needed, other than there was an express, expression of concern. And I think at the same motion, we've all sat here tonight and we've expressed to folks that, look, if the administration is coming to us and they're telling us, look, this isn't working, we need to do something about this. The board has expressed the willingness to step forward and do something about it. Now, we have sat in negotiations with the teachers and we did talk for a good eight, nine weeks about different proposals on how to move forward. The salaries and benefits are the largest driver of our budget, period. And that, the salaries and benefits of our professional employees are the largest driver of our budget. I was accused earlier in this whole board, and I just remind everybody, I am one of nine. I may be the one sitting in this position speaking, but we speak with one voice on this issue, okay? So it's the nine of us up here who rejected the offer that was presented to us because there were strings attached that have not been disclosed to the public. There is a requirement that there be no furloughs and no demotions. At the same time, there is, the numbers that we were provided didn't even talk about extending the contract an additional year at a cost to the school district that exceeded the benefits that we're receiving from the concessions. So it is true and we have the numbers to do it because we sat down, Mr. Peterson, and we reviewed your numbers. We took the, sir, hold on one second. We reviewed your numbers. We reviewed your numbers, I'm answering your question. We reviewed your numbers. We took the information that was in your matrices, we plugged them through a spreadsheet, we ran the numbers. And the numbers you provided on your sheet do not match the numbers that your matrices support. Instead of a two-point-three million dollar savings over two years, it's a one-point-seven million dollar savings over two years. You add in the liability of a third year to the contract and that number drops considerably to one-point-five million dollars. So it's an average savings of a half a million dollars a year for the school district over a three-year period and it extends a contract that has many other provisions to it that this board and this administration have a hard time working with and that you don't have in here medical expenses.
Which people do take?
One second, sir, one second. You don't take into consideration the implications of what you put forward. And if we run the numbers for what you have here, at the end of three years, our liability goes up to thirty-one million dollars for salaries and benefits.
Yeah, benefits.
Well, benefits are part of your compensation, are they not?
Yes.
Are you, is part of your compensation benefits? Is that part of the budget that we have?
Next year.
Okay.
Five percent.
Sir, one or two percent of something that's moving at ten or twelve percent is not helpful.
Our shares in the county, for example, are shared.
Look, Mr. Peterson, if you guys wanna sit down and discuss something that we could all agree to, this board extended, this board extended an olive branch when we rejected your offer.
No, you did not.
We said, no, we did not. No, we did not. We said, the offer you extended to us was not acceptable, however, we were willing to continue to discuss what had previously been put on the table. You guys decided, hold on a second, I have the floor. You guys decided you were going to ratify a contract that you knew this board would not accept.
That's not true, this is a reasonable offer.
Sir, extending your contract in your third?
If you're gonna address you, if you're gonna address you, we gave you a reasonable offer. Your counter was a perpetual, ever-ending free. When we reached the end of our contract, we are frozen at status quo. You want us to freeze next year, you want us to freeze the following year while you all just sit here and don't control your end of the bargain. All we're asking is to meet in the middle. We gave you a reasonable offer and we're asking that you preserve the program with our reasonable offer. You can't make us out to be the bad guy.
No one's making you guys out to be the bad guy. Look, folks, no one has made the teachers out to be the bad guy. The bad guy...
No, not in terms of the shape.
All right, hold on one second.
Not true.
Hold on, hold on. Order.
Behavior of the teachers in the shape.
Honor.
And if you, the behavior to be...
That's a recess.
No, I'm sorry. It's going on.
It's motion to recess.
Okay. Anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Finish with playing.
There's been a motion to recess, I'm sorry.
You're talking and now you're ready to this. Listen, listen. He had the floor.
Mr. Templeton, one second.
You went in this guy like, like, that. This man, this man is my fault.
Look, Mr. Templeton, we have a temporary recess.
No, hold on, hold on. There was a question, what's the point? Did this man?
Anything else?
Let him finish.
Okay, sir, go ahead and finish.
Um, I just think there's a lot of talk about one side betting and the other side betting. I think that in the, uh, the block of money, we're getting them to bet on children's education. And I think that's something that needs to be thought of every time that your servant was best for the students. I, I know that you all think about taxpayers and how much they put forth, but after hearing stories of consistent surpluses and not worrying about tax raises and now, you know, we're gonna cut programs to keep that surplus, maybe the community hasn't stepped up and you guys are focusing on the taxpayers a little bit too much.
Thank you.
I'm Bonnie Watts, I'm the 32428 group at the Tavaya. I would like to address the issue of the smart boards in the classroom. I understand that they are a tool for those teachers. I understand that they do add a lot. But I also know that I graduated from Daniel Boone in two thousand eight and it was when I was still a smart board for adding part of math. And I also know that I've been put through the basic skills math program my entire life. And I was being taught a smart board when I had to add on my fingers. There's something wrong there. I understand that was a poor tool, but it seemed like the evil of this reading foundation. And you can't add fancy equipment onto a shaky foundation. You don't spend a thousand dollars on a roof when your house doesn't have a foundation. And I'm sorry, but it just seems to me that you're setting up an awful lot of students to not have that foundation. I also graduated from Pitts Town University with a degree in communication design, in language and graphic design, and art program, which we are not cutting. Not everybody fits in the same track. And I just, I can't see that these kids are going to be getting a well-grounded education when their core classes are being cut, when they're being charged for extracurricular activities. I'm sure you are all very well-educated people, as are many people in this room. And they could not have been that well-educated if they hadn't been accepted at college. And this becoming even more rigorous task to get accepted and if all of these things added up, that makes you a prospect for college. And I know for a fact that it was my extracurricular activities that put me above and beyond and allowed me to win scholarships and getting into college. And I know that raising taxes is not a great option, but I mean, I also know that I've seen clubs that raised thousands of dollars for charities. If we can raise for a charity, we should be able to raise money right here at our home. And I just, I can't see it any other way. We can raise for other people, we can be able to raise for other kids.
Thank you. Mr. Calhoun?
Yes. Shane Calhoun, 328 Tavaya. I have a question on your tiered system for activity fees. My question was, I sent in an email that was similar to the other one. Football range anywhere from sixty to ninety-five in college a year. And that's only from the second tier. Now, you're still, you were adding all the games received, just football, when you shared it with the people that came out, were banned and charity. Did a hundred percent of this game received offset just as one activity came out there?
Yes.
Yes, why, why would you discriminate against the two?
The information I was given was broken down, that's the way it showed up, and I just took the information that I was given.
That's a question for committee. We didn't consider that people go to City Bay, but one football game there, the Ravens show up because of the cuts that was implemented. There's an outcry for this community. Why was this player there at the football game? It was, it was a playoff game when they were receiving it when, when you guys first cut into their budget. That was the same year where they said they weren't going to march at Memorial Day because of the twenty, I guess it's ten, it's twenty-five percent of their budget. Second thing is, when you're doing these activity fees, you have to realize that, yes, football, actually football, we gave one with four or five other activities, I guess, yet all were in the second tier. Band lost entries, they lost all their away games. They didn't get to participate in that football. So not only did they have the equal, uh, uh, activity fee, they got their program cut at fifty percent because of the lack of funding. Your, your track, they have to pay for, you know, uh, when they get to their track fees and stuff. You don't cover everything equally on your sports and your extra activities. What needs to be done is, this board needs to look at this budget, I've been telling you this for years now, that money can be in this first year and not in this first year. These people have to pay more other than the activity fees because they have all the top money going over here. And you have to stop looking at the students as cash revenue. They're here to learn and participate and enjoy their, their, uh, time in school. So please, stop looking at the children as a way revenue. Thank you.
Ma'am, go ahead. Can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, D. Staley, 71 Tolgator, Doublelift. Um, thank you all for listening so intently and not falling asleep and making sure we have eye contact here. With the reduction, my question is, with the reduction of elementary alphas, what are your plans to their curriculum when the number of classes per teacher will increase due to the furloughs in each department, but the remaining teachers have reduced salaries? And also, I don't know if you're aware of this, but all the alphas teachers work with the regular classroom teachers to implement intervention programs. Between the elimination of basic skills and the reduction of alphas staff, who's gonna pick up the slack? The test scores will go down, the more students, I'm afraid, are gonna fall through the cracks.
It's the same plan that we discussed earlier tonight.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's the same plan that Mrs. Torcia put forward. We'll, we'll monitor and adjust what we have to do in the absence of that support.
And we're gonna, that special teacher, this is not, uh, this is Torcia's program in the math program, but do, and are we gonna even know what the...
We'll provide you with a full schedule once it's implemented, yes.
Down, twenty-five, thirty minutes?
I mean, you asked me for the specific details of the plan that's going to be put forward? Is that what you're asking for?
Don't, don't you think the kids are gonna be affected? And that's so true.
Clearly, I think everyone recognizes there's gonna be an impact to the school district on all the cuts and proposals that are being made. And I think what we heard tonight was there is a plan put forth as represented by Ms. Torcia and on how to address those things going forward. And they'll be fleshing out the details of that plan and providing that to the support staff to, to implement. I mean, this board doesn't have the number of minutes per day, you know, we don't have that granular detail at this time because it hasn't, we just decided to move forward and it's being implemented, so.
Shut it down. Someone's gonna make a motion. Um, I'm disappointed in the decision I was made about the new basic sports program. But from what was discussed earlier, we're arguing why we're having to, that, that decision might be revisited at a later point.
I think all of these decisions have an opportunity to be revisited in the next thirty days.
All right. So I think that's...
I think all of these decisions have an opportunity to be revisited in the next 30 days.
Jake Luntzer, 601 Miles Cooper, Douglasville. I just want to say one thing. I have seen some pretty shameful behavior from not only you and everybody but from the people on the school board, that's all.
Hi, Eva Stone, 713 East 9th Street, Birdsboro. My concern is about this fund balance and why we don't use it before. I'm a little late coming in on things, but even kindergarten, being cut to half-day is a concern. And I'm thinking about, you know, this 300 students we're losing, 200 students we're losing. And why are we losing them? And why would my family or our family consider moving? Could it be that we don't have a planned out multi-year budget? Where we're looking at a stable school where we know what we're going to spend our money each year and we know what we're doing? We're not bringing anybody in by what we're doing. And why are we, I just keep thinking, why are we going to use this fund balance before? And why are we so easily just decided tonight to say this doesn't miss and then cut this doesn't miss? It's upsetting and disturbing. And a concern of mine is again cutting the half-day kindergarten and how that wasn't stated.
We didn't cut half-day kindergarten?
I know, but I mean, cutting back to half-day kindergarten last year over the years before I moved in. I moved back to the district eight years ago when my daughter moved in. And I really realized the impact that it's going to have on students.
Well, let me just try to address some of your questions. So for the last few years, this board has been using fund balance as a way of balancing our budget. We have a deficit. We've implemented some tax increases. We've made program cuts. We've pulled lots of different levers to balance the budget. And every year, we've taken a piece of our fund balance and we've said, "Look, we've got X number of dollars in fund balance. Let's take a percentage of this and use it to plug the hole." And, you know, this year was 1.3 million for the 1213 budget. The year before that, it was over a million dollars. I think the year before that was $750,000 and so on and so forth. And, you know, there have been a variety of different reasons why our budget actuals did not meet our projections. We had money returned to us from the state as part of a building project. It was $800,000. We had, we did a bond defecence another year. We receive additional funds from the state after the fact. After we pass a budget here, state passes their budget and there's additional funds there that we hadn't anticipated. There are certain assumptions that are being made as part of our budget in terms of projections as how much money you're going to use. And those assumptions may be a little conservative. We, each year, we try to refine what those assumptions are and drill into them in a much more in-depth point of view. One year, I think for two years in a row, we spent a considerable amount of time focusing on our special education area of the budget. So I think the answer to your first question is every year we've attempted to use fund balance. I think there's been a conscious effort of this board to spend down our fund balance. And at the end of the day, we're still throwing a surplus. So you just saw tonight, the board allocated more than half of our fund balance to...
Are we going to have anything? Or are we going to project that we're going to have something next year? I mean...
In terms of our fund balance?
Fund balance, the budget, I mean, it all just seems to be so clear all the time.
Well, the numbers change from one minute to next. I can promise you that. I mean, we sit here in January and November and December and January before a lot of different pieces of the puzzle have even been formulated by the state. And we try to assemble what the budget's going to look like going forward. And based on those projections, we've tried to bring forward ideas for solving the deficit that we've had recently so that we can at least talk about what those considerations are going to be and get feedback from the public and share information amongst the board members and administration so we can hopefully make a more informed decision. Everything that was on the budget tonight or as part of this agenda tonight has been a point of discussion since November, the end of November. Okay, so the concerns that we've had regarding elementary band or basic skills or psychologists or any of these items that were up there have been items that we've been talking about collectively as a community for the last six months. Okay? And there was a point in February where we reached a deadline where the board needed to make some decisions for the benefit of the parents in terms of extracurriculars and kindergarten. And the board said, "Well, look, based on the information we have, we're confident we can support these programs." So we brought those programs back. And we continue to work on the other things that were still on the table. And clearly, we all have different perspectives and passions about what we support and what, you know, we may not support. And collectively as a group, we come to some sort of consensus to meet that in the middle and meet in the middle on those things and hopefully we pick the best path going forward. But I can assure you that we spend hours and hours and days and weeks and months poring over the information that's provided to us, analyzing that information, trying to project out what our fund balance is going to be. How are we doing versus on our budget vis-à-vis this year? Are we ahead? Are we behind? How is that going to impact our decisions going forward? And it's a constant process that we all spend a lot of time in good faith in trying to execute upon. There's always opportunity for this public to participate in the finance committee meetings that we have, the facility committee meetings, the revenue enhancement committee meetings. We have committee meetings every month on these issues. And folks come in and we're not limited to a three-minute discussion. In those, typically in those committee meetings, people can get up and speak for quite a bit of time and there's an opportunity for some back-and-forth discussion there which is a little bit more fruitful. I can just tell you that we've spent a lot of time trying to address those issues that you've raised. Declining enrollment started a long time ago in this school district. It peaked, I want to say in like nine?
Nine, 10.
10? Well before the budget crisis hit and started to decline.
Basically, you can stress that very simply, declining enrollment. I mean, we bought our, we built our house on my street and it, I mean, my kids were the youngest down the block. They're now the oldest, they're now both, one's out this year, one's out next year. Twenty-one houses on the street that start the same families there. I know several students in the audience, they're going to graduate, not be replaced because their families are proven out. I mean, the problem is we don't have new houses.
Well, we also had two population bubbles.
I'm concerned in general with unstable people, but this unstable seating situation with the budget all the time isn't appealing. It's not appealing, it doesn't make you feel safe.
Okay, we understand, we appreciate your concerns. Thank you.
I'll tell you where the kids are going. If you go around and they're in the age of junior development, they're going to the ICA. They're moving to the Catholic churches. The Catholic church is going to have to build a bigger building for all of our students. And when you talk to their parents, they will tell you the reason they're not going to this school is because they're tired of the chaos and they want more stability. And they are willing to come back and cities get better if they ever care about it. So to say that they're not the families of the same families, that might be true to a point. But I know there's tons of families in my neighborhood that are sending their kids to the Catholic church, the school because of this whole mess that we're in. That's where we're going. They're going to the Catholic school. So that's where we're going. And I'd just like to thank the teachers for everything that they do. Mr. Beadle, I think it's time, maybe, to resign.
Thank you for your time. Okay, I'm done.
My name is Diana Marsden, 3014 Hattie Drive, Birdsboro. Before I much get here this evening, I attended a spring concert at ABC, which was phenomenal. So thank you for saving the elementary band program. My children were each in it for one year and they're no longer, but I do fund a value of 100, so thank you. With that said, there were many teachers from this school district who didn't need to be at ABC tonight. And they were because that's the kind of people they are. They care about children, they love to ask for help, and I think we need to recognize that. I do have a question. There was something about the encorese and, number one, I think 30 minutes just isn't enough time to get back in the gym. However, the newspaper, it was listed as demotions for encorese teachers rather than furloughs. And I'm not for either one, so please don't misinterpret. However, if we are doing this because, solely because of declining enrollment, why are we demoting everyone? When people who are furloughed, who are paying unemployment, and people who are demoted are going to have a real hard time supplementing half the income and finding employment elsewhere?
She was asking a question of why are we demoting people as opposed to furlough? Well, the demotion process still allows us to keep the program in place. The board had the alternative of completely furloughing all of the specials. We chose not to make that a recommendation so that we could still maintain some of the program. I understand that it's not popular and there's a concern about the 30-minute time limit. But again, we've talked about that all night long, so.
No, I think you're misinterpreting. I'm sorry, maybe, I was mistaken. If you need to, if you need to cut programs, but you still want to keep some of the programs, why aren't there furloughs and some people who travel between buildings versus demotions when everybody's set part-time and handful on unemployment? That is my question.
Brian, I don't, you want to explain the difference between furlough and demotion?
I'm not sure that this answers your question. But demotion is any reduction in the salary or position. The furlough would be the complete suspension from employment. The board had, the administration reviewing the program options determined that it would, it could better satisfy its program needs by maintaining a full staff at a less than full-time position.
And that's a very unusual decision or was that a proper decision?
I think it was a combination. I think it was, they looked at their finances. There were certain financial requirements that needed to be met. And they made, the administration made a recommendation to satisfy the programmatic needs of the children to, you know, maximum extent that the district could afford.
Thank you.
Karen Lederman, I live at 312 Pleasant Drive in Douglasville. You probably don't know it, but I've been a kindergarten teacher in your district for 24 years, maybe 100. Still, I haven't used 24 years, especially in kindergarten level. And I've always been amazed that I just keep waiting. I see your faces here and I see the level of words faces here as I've come through the meetings through all the years. And I keep waiting for the people who are making decisions about what's happening in our schools to see their faces in our school. And I'm seeing that there's people who are happy that they're happening in my kindergarten, who does some really good things for the teachers, and in all the other teachers' classes. And it just makes me really sad. You're welcome anytime. You have a couple more days, one of the twins, we're having fun in kindergarten. Even though there have been a lot of changes. Whole day was great, that child, a little bit, and that child. Seems like kindergarten's always first on the chopping block every year, aren't we? And been a lot of changes. I went from having 17 kids in the class last year, 23. And if you don't think that's different, you haven't spent a lot of time with fire moves lately. But I just wanted to spend the time to do because it seems like we need to come over and see what's actually happening in the schools that you're making these students out of. I hope so.
Jan Man, 76 East 6th Street, Birdsboro. I get to graduate in the early this year and I'm so lucky. I wouldn't want to graduate from anywhere else. However disappointed. We are one district, one community. We're supposed to be a team and we're not acting like one. And we're going to change and we don't start bending and working together.
Thank you.
Tammy Hillburn, out of Presley, Douglasville. I just real quickly want to ask you, each of you, what have you done in kind of respect to the kindergarten teachers? What have you done to see or experience the students' life cycle in the schools? You had a child, and by the way, how many of you actually have a child that has gone through or in the kindergarten school district right now? I have a four-year-old, so she's not even in school. And this is me preparing to either put her in kindergarten or not. So could you raise your hand and show me if you have a child or you've had a child with Daniel Boone? And if you don't have a child with Daniel Boone, is it a choice that you made because Daniel Boone is insufficient? Because again, this is mine, this is what I have to make. So primary school board is not having their children in the school district that they're representing and making decisions for that casts doubt in my mind. I work as a professional in the former student industry and I can tell you that if we don't focus on the basic skills at a very elementary level, that our kids are behind the wall. And that's why we have to hire immigrants and our IT force has been outsourced. And because we don't have and cannot hire skilled employees in technical fields, I think that your impact now on the decision at elementary school level does have a huge impact. You may be dead when it happens, God forbid. But if you don't do now for the corporations, then downward they are going to suffer. And we won't have an eligible, intelligent worker. So I hope that you really read a book, go see school. I've been reading books about education and challenging children and I have a gifted child myself. So I would hope that you put some time and effort into reading about How Do Children Succeed? There's a great book at the Exeter Library, How Children Succeed. It's worth your time, I hope you're reading.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Date, 707 North Mazzie Creek Road, Douglasville. I'm really upset with the behavior and how the teachers are being attacked. And I've gone through the district all 12 years and I'm planning on why I am going to Westchester in the fall to major in middle grades, education, and special ed. And it's the people behind us and throughout the district that made me want to be a teacher. They're great people, they're amazing people there. They're so involved, people, they're great. And I really hate to see that you're letting them off happy going and see what they do on a day-to-day basis. And it's just upsetting, so, thank you.
Carol Lewis, 18 High School, Dr. Amick, Eastside 103. And I too have a lot of respect for the Daniel Boone teachers, which is my own experience. And I personally think you guys did a good service to the community tonight. It seemed like a real compromise was made between people who are kind of taxed and the way the ground and the other extreme of the board and also the public that doesn't want any tax increases. So they'll be using some tax increases from the past and holding the line on the tax increases from this year. So I appreciate the work that you've done and I think it was a nice compromise. I'd also like to clarify the record. I was with the technology coordinator for 70, he was at Maculate. And with all due respect, we haven't really seen a lot in the enrollment other than the kindergarten class. Thank you.
Bob Pannick, 230 Asher Drive. I spoke to you about 27 hours ago, if you remember. That was all, thank you, being late. I just want to give you a little insight into my role and that's really what I think many of you of there lack. And basically, we're talking about a schedule that is all basically surrounding children. And if you were to try to think about it in a business, imagine coming up with a four- to five-hour presentation every single day of the week. And you have 45 minutes, which now, sorry, a half an hour, to prepare for. And you don't have a secretary to make your phone calls. You don't have anybody to respond or email. You don't have anybody that's maybe acting out of a mind. And you have to stop and you have to do something about that. With the elimination of basic skills and with the encorese elementary, basically that, what that does is it now gives these teachers less time to work with those students now for basic skills that need the differentiating instruction. So according to Mrs. Torcia, that's what we're supposed to do, differentiate, differentiate instruction that reaches those basic skills kids. And now you have less time to do it. I'm going to close with all things are late.
Good evening, my name is Walt Fritz, 128 East Side Drive, Douglasville. This is my first school. Excuse me, I'm looking here at this page. Debt 16% in 2009, where is it now?
Our debt balance has been reduced by about $15 million over the last few years. And the percentage, I believe, is about 14% of the overall budget at this point in time?
A whole 2%.
I'm sorry?
A whole 2%. Between, I'm sorry.
Well, as a percentage of the whole, it has reduced.
Chris, do you, I believe I read that your service was not 7 million a year?
Our debt service has been constant, that's correct. So again, as a percentage of the whole, debt service has remained the same. It's now a smaller percentage of our overall operating costs on an annual basis.
Thank you. This is why I want to send my daughters to Christian school. I'm sorry, and I'm sorry, any teachers? My daughter Jennifer is in the next phase of the northern program in Williams class. She loves it and I'm very happy that she's there and she made that choice. I'm not going to bring revenue into your district except for the people, myself, who couldn't pay for Daniel Boone and an alternative. People who can pay for an alternative are going to go outside. They're going to go private, they're going to go for a road here. You have to see that. We're talking about cutting programs that, or actually we made the decision that to cut the programs to ensure not only that the kids who would normally be left behind are going to be able to catch up, but also that ensures that the kids who were in the class who are leading a level or above are going to be able to move to the next level. If they don't be able to do that because your teachers who at their times are stressed are only going to be able to teach to the lowest common denominator. It's math, it's a simple law. Tell me that those teachers are going to be able to teach their best to all those students when they have students who will not be able, who won't get it as fast, won't be able to get it with the rest of the group. They're going to have to teach it to them? They're going to have to, I don't want to say no, no. They're going to have to lower the law. Do you know what I mean? How do you expect to do that?
I think this, the administration explained to you tonight how they were going to accomplish that.
Yes, they explained.
What's that?
That you're going to work on a plan that you will have to...
I think Ms. Torcia explained very clearly how they were going to provide the support services that were required.
Reduce the amount of time and you're going to have more students to collect, correct?
So we're at three minutes?
Of course.
I can't, it was the rule, okay? You're welcome to come back. This meeting's adjourned.